Okay. I see by the clock on the wall that it is now three o'clock, time to call to order the Board of Directors' regular meeting study session for Thursday, December fifteenth. Could I have a roll call, please?
President Martin, we're going to do the swearing in first.
Okay, all right, all right. Item two then, swearing in of new board members, Arden.
Yeah. We go through the ritual where we'll probably come down here by the table. Do I need to step around the mirror or should I stay here? Right here.
Mr. Wallam, you can stay where you are, just make sure you use your mic.
This is hot, yeah, it should be. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Okay, welcome, and please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations and welcome to the board.
Other side, I think. Yeah, where it says signature address, yep, that side. Thank you. And General Manager Wallam will sign the other side, but we can do that after the meeting.
After the meeting was over.
Congratulations. Now we'll go ahead for the roll call, please.
Thank you. Director Meyerhoffen.
Present.
Director Duff.
Present.
Director Griffith.
Present.
Director Sewell.
Here.
And President Martin.
Present.
Thank you, we have Quorn.
Okay, Counselor, would you go over the rules of procedure?
Yes, according to the rules of procedure adopted by the Board of Directors, all noticed meetings are conducted using Rosenberg's Rules of Order as a procedural guideline. Directors should refrain from responding directly to public comments at meetings of the board. The Board President will refer matters raised by public comments to the General Manager for follow-up as appropriate. Occasionally, a prompt response may be offered when an obvious answer resolution is available, provided this is done in compliance with the Brown Act. Directors should refrain from debating or making decisions in response to public comments. The President of the Board presides at all meetings and decides all points of order and procedure during meetings. The President is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all board meetings. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the President. No member of the Board should speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member of the Board wishing to speak on the subject shall have been given an opportunity to speak. No board member shall interfere with the orderly progress of a board meeting. And in order to ensure the orderly progress of board meetings, the Board President regulates the amount of time to be dedicated to a particular agenda item.
Thank you, Counselor. Public input, this is the opportunity for members of the public to address the board on matters within the board's jurisdiction. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. State law prohibits the board from discussing or taking action on any item not listed on the agenda. Do we have any members of the public wishing to address the board?
President Martin, we do not have any members of the public wishing to make public comment.
Okay, anybody in the room here wishing to make a comment? No, okay. Moving on to the Human Resources Report, item six. Arden? Can you hear me here now? You moved that. We will do the Human Resources Report Monday as you do during the regular session. We have only one person, a special person, though, been with us a long time, so. All right. Moving on to item seven, Resolution twenty-two-two-three-zero. Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Mission Springs Water District proclaiming a local emergency persists, re-ratifying the proclamation of a state of emergency by executive order Anizenora dash zero-nine dash twenty-one and re-authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the Mission Springs Water District for the period December twenty-third through twenty-twenty-two through January twenty-second twenty-twenty-three pursuant to provisions of the Ralph M. Brown Act. This is a standard item of business that we go through each each board member or each board meeting. Is there any questions from the from the board on item seven? Yes, Robert?
And I know I brought this up last time, I just want to bring it up again. So this, after this, we are able to continue the resolution, however the rules of engagement, so to speak, will change at that point, correct?
So this expires, AB three-sixty-one expires on February twenty-eighth. And for the benefit of the two new board members, I'm going to go into a little bit more detail on this. I think it may be helpful. Under COVID, when we had COVID, we had a lot of people that, in fact, some councils and boards were attending entirely remotely because of the COVID outbreak. And that was done under an emergency order, and then AB three-sixty-one was passed that allowed any member of the Board, if they needed to, for any reason, or preferred to, to attend remotely. And they didn't have to, you know, jump through any hoops or was no procedural prerequisite to attending remotely. Normally, before COVID, what was required was if you were out of town and you couldn't be at the meeting in person, then you would give notice to the clerk of the Board. And then she would post the location that you would be attending from in the agenda. So if you're attending from your home or a hotel or something, that would be posted in the agenda, and then you would have to post the agenda wherever you were attending from. So if you're in a hotel or you're attending from your living room, you would post the agenda on the front door, and the public would be entitled to attend from that remote location. And I actually did have one situation years back where somebody posted the agenda on their front door, and members of the public showed up and wanted to attend from their home, so. But that almost never happens. But that became impractical during COVID to give notice, and people would test positive or have family members test positive, and so these new laws were adopted that allow people to attend remotely for any reason without explanation, and that's AB three-sixty-one, but that expires at the end of February. So we now have new legislation, and that's AB two-four-four-nine. And this is an amendment to the Brown Act. It's an addition to the old process of attending by notifying the clerk that you want to attend remotely for any reason. So you still have the ability, if you're on vacation or you don't feel good, or somebody in your house doesn't feel good and you don't want to attend, to give notice to the clerk of the Board, she posts the address that you're going to be attending from on the agenda, and then you have to post it on your door. But you have this alternative procedure under AB two-four-four-nine going forward. And that allows you to attend remotely without posting the agenda on your door and without posting the address that you're attending from remotely on the agenda. And the two circumstances under which you can rely on AB two-four-four-nine are, number one, if you have what's referred to in the legislation as just cause. And just cause is any of the following. You have childcare or caregiving of a child, a parent, a grandparent, a grandchild, sibling, spouse, or domestic partner that requires you to participate remotely. Or a contagious illness that prevents you from attending in person. Or a need related to a disability that it's not otherwise accommodated, or travel, you're out of town on official business of this entity or another state or local agency. So in those instances, you would have what's referred to as just cause. Don't have to give the address that you're attending from, don't have to post the agenda. But you can only do that twice a year, twice in a calendar year, under that exception. And then there's the other exception, which is the emergency exception. And an emergency would be, let me see if I can just find the definition here. An emergency would be a physical or family medical emergency that prevents you from attending in person. If you're attending based on the emergency exception, then you need to give notice to the clerk as soon as possible, and then the first action of the Board will be to authorize you to attend on, due to an emergency. So that's the update. But we do, we are allowed to use AB three-sixty-one still, but that will soon be replaced by the amendment to the Brown under AB two-four-four-nine.
Okay, any other questions, Ivan? Ted, no. Moving on to item eight, Resolution twenty-two-two-three-one, Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Mission Springs Water District, recommended approval of the notice of exemption determination under California Environmental Quality Guidelines for the Supplemental Environmental Project. You also have two additional documents that were provided before the meeting. Over the weekend, we'll listen to a presentation, but over the weekend, familiarize yourself with the information provided, and we'll I may take a vote on that resolution at that time. Arden, anything you want to? Yeah, well, I will introduce the the agenda item, and then Brian will take it from there and give you some details. In October of twenty-twenty, as you know, the Horton Moistwater Retrieval Plant had a breach of a dike that resulted in treated water flowing off-site, which is prohibited. The California Regional Water Quality Control Board, Colorado River Basin Region, and the Mission Springs Water District have agreed to and civil and administrative civil liberty, or excuse me, liability in the amount of one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars, which will resolve the violation specified in that order. In accordance with the State Water Resources Control Board's policy on supplemental environmental projects, which we refer to as SEP, if you hear me say that, the parties agree that the one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand shall be suspended pending completion of a SEP costing the same amount. When the, when dealing with a disadvantaged community, the state allows up to one-hundred percent of the administrative civil liability to be spent on a project benefiting the community as opposed to sending this money to the state, which would be money lost, essentially. We're pleased to say that the Regional Board has allowed us to do the SEP, one-hundred percent of the SEP, as an alternative that will benefit this local community. Brian will explain the project, and just remember, though, but action doesn't have to be taken today. We just wanted, you know, answer any questions that you have. And I just add something to that. My understanding was we were planning on spending that amount of money anyway on the project, is that correct? Well, no, this is money that, that will, that we, that they've specified as a part of the stipulation, yeah. I mean, it's money that we use, it'll accomplish the same things if we went in with the project and converted a septic tank and abated a septic tank and converted that flow to the sewer. Okay? Okay? Brian?
Thank you, General Manager, President Martin. Staff identified sixty-eight properties which are within two-hundred feet of a sanitary sewer and not connected. That matches up with the sixty-eight properties that you see in front of you. The document that was actually posted on our website for day's agenda was twenty-one because that was the number of properties that we actually had in our supplemental environmental project to the state as being the first ones or the closest ones to our wells. This, this project will remove the septic tanks, thus removing a groundwater contamination source. So by proximity to the wells is how we prioritized the property, those sixty-eight properties. Depending on the construction bids received, the number of properties connected will be adjusted to maximize the available monies. Again, starting with twenty-one, because when we were starting this and negotiating with the state, it was in July, a little bit different bidding environment than we're going to see when this goes out on the street in January. So hopefully, we will be able to provide this service to others than just the first twenty-one. Presently, staff is developing the project plan specifications and completing the necessary environmental clearances. This action is part of those environmental clearances. We're doing this with the help of Tom Dotson, who is an environmental consultant, who is currently serving as an on-call services contract. And he is the one that suggested that we go down this process. What makes this, or why we believe that it will fall under the notice of exemption is because in this document, it talks about that work related to the physical connection and the existing sanitary lateral and abating the private system will be completed on previously disturbed areas. You have the sewer in the, in the right of, road right-of-way. When we built this sewer, we extended past the right-of-way, basically allowing a property owner to then go ahead and make this connection at their leisure, or when they had enough funds, or when they wanted to make the connection, depending on the condition of their septic tank. So we already go onto their property roughly between five feet, ten feet, depending on the situation of the property. The parcel itself has been disturbed when the existing house was built, or when the leach system was built, or when the septic tank was built. So because everything has been disturbed, we don't think we're going to be disturbing or finding any environmentally sensitive issues when we do the construction. Again, we're talking about the approval of the exemption under the SEQA guidance persuades into Section fifteen-three-hundred of the Supplemental Environmental Project. Direct the General Manager to sign the attached notice of exemption and then file the same with the Riverside County Clerk. Is there any questions?
Ivan, do you have any questions?
My main concern is
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to come in tomorrow morning sometime, or tomorrow sometime, whenever you have time, Mr. Arden, and get more information. We've had some tours and stuff and things, and so I really haven't had much time to think about this one here, and I need more information. My main concern is that in my district, you know, five, I don't hear any complaints about the quality of water or anything, but I've always heard complaints about the sewer hookup and that type of thing, and I'm really concerned of people having to put this cost on their tax rolls and then possibly losing their house because of that added cost and being this one-day water district showing up there and saying, hey, we need to do this. So I'd like to get some more information tomorrow with either one of you, whoever you feel.
Yeah, well, I might have Brian help you.
Okay.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't, it shouldn't affect that.
That's what, so we can get into the more detail of the difference between the assessment districts and what some of your constituents may be talking about, but for the most part, in this particular project, the only thing that they're going to see on their tax roll, if they choose to pay for their sanitary service as part of their tax roll, and they can remove that and pay that at once a year, which you will see again coming up, and I believe it's in June. I was going to say, Arturo's on the call, he can help us as well, but there's some nuances to that and how you can put that and take that off, and that's why the conversation will go off topic a little bit from this particular. And I think your suggestion is very, is very wise, and we can talk about that separately.
But this is a voluntary thing. They do not have to do this. We, we're going to go to them and say, here's the option, here's what we offer you. If they don't want to do it, they can choose not to do it.
They can choose not to hook up to the?
Yes, and matter of fact, I'm going to, fast forward, we had, just in case something like this happened, the exhibit that you have in front of you shows the two closest wells to these sixty-eight parcels. We prioritize them based on their proximity to these wells, trying to eliminate the closest groundwater contamination source to our well field. So from that perspective, that's the prioritization. So in coming from what you see here, well, twenty-nine, as you're working out away from that well, those are the, how the priority will be set. If someone does opt out, then we'll just go to the next property and the next property and so forth, and getting back all the way that is sixty-eight. So we did not want to basically pick and choose which properties, so that's why we have the criteria of proximity to the wells from a groundwater protection. It's something that the Regional Board has approved with other supplemental environmental projects in the past. So that's why they felt comfortable with this one. So we'll be able to talk about this a little bit more, but yes, it's not a requirement. They can always opt out and then go to the next one. However, in the next basin plan modification, there is a good chance that they would be required, they're sort of required now, but there's some loose language in the letters that get sent to the property owners about making that connection. But moving forward after the basin amendment, they'll be required to. So if they don't do it now, and they're part of this process, then they would have to do it at a later date. And then that would be possibly gone on their tax rolls and things like that. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of the process, and then you and I can talk about some of the details and some of the nuances and other questions, but.
I think it puts my mind at ease.
Okay.
Listening will feel better, thank you.
Amber, any questions?
No.
Okay. Like I said, review the documents, and we'll address it again on Monday. Item nine, Resolution twenty-two-two-three-two, Amending Resolution Number twenty-two-seven-teen, Revisions to the Mission Springs Water District Personnel Rules and Regulations, Arden? Yes, we bring these to you, I'm going to have Orianna present this to you, and we have John and be here to answer questions if you have anything, but every six months, we bring new, we bring these rules to you to amend them, to comply by the deadline with the new state, mainly state standards. Some of these are some modifications, but we want you to know how, what the policies are in that board rule. And with that, I'll let Orianna present the document. You have the red print, there is what the changes are.
And then we also, I'll just introduce to the new board members, we have V. Satello attending virtually, and she's an attorney in my office that practices labor and employment, and she's available to answer any questions, legal questions that you have.
Okay, good afternoon, President Martin and members of the board, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, good. In order to ensure that the district is in full compliance with labor laws implemented by the state and federal agencies, we, along with District Council, regularly review and revise the personnel rules and regulations, also known as the employee handbook. Updates are usually made two, three times a year. The last update was done five months ago in July. Changes to the handbook include updates to existing policies to comply with the law or to clarify language. As General Manager Wallam noted, Exhibit A outlines in red the proposed updates to the employee handbook. The paragraphs with the updates to the handbook are included in this exhibit. I would like to add, though, that there are two changes that I need to add that are not reflected in Exhibit A. On the second page, Rule twenty-six B, sick leave usage, the entire paragraph should be in red as it is a new addition to the rule. Also, on the last page of Exhibit A, Rule twenty-seven E, bereavement leave, we have added a fourth point that states the five days of, the five days of bereavement leave do not have to be used continuously. They can be taken intermittently, but the entire leave must be completed within three months of the death of the eligible family member. The revised Exhibit A, including these two changes I just talked about, will be uploaded for Monday's meeting. These additional updates brings the employee handbook in compliance with labor law requirements. Would you like me to review each rule, or are there any specific questions that I may answer?
Well, I, I think that the documents are pretty self-explanatory, but does anybody have any questions or comments? Or what would you like to do? Would you like to have her go over in detail the, the changes? Or are you comfortable with just looking at the changes as presented in the documents?
I think that's, I didn't have one question.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Hi, Orianna, thank you for the presentation. Rule twenty-nine A-one, I was just wondering just from curiosity's sake, what are the instances where the probationary period lasts longer than a year?
There are times when, for one reason or another, the supervisor may not get around to completing a performance evaluation. The supervisor could technically be on leave, on vacation, something could have happened. Also, sometimes there are changes in performance that may require an extended review period to to see if there is if the employee would pass probation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Ted, no questions, questions?
Just one. Could I get some clarification in Rule number thirty-nine? Am I to understand that the employees who are maintaining the commercial driver's license that is not part of their job at MSWD will then join MSWD's DOT drug testing program? Or will they be required to be in their own drug testing program and provide results?
No, they will be joining the mandated DOT testing program. That is a requirement whenever they are going to be utilizing their commercial driver's license. So we have no choice but to enroll them in the federal DOT program.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? You, pardon?
Mr. Wallam, your mic, please.
Oh, I apologize. Other than, this is beneficial to the district because we, there are times when we need that driver's license in order to get our equipment around in this, and we have voluntarily, by doing this, we'll have more of those employees available for that task. Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope, no other questions, so thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item ten, Annual Report of Capacity Fees and Related Capital Expenditures, Arden? You see this every year, we're, we're quite quite in compliance, as you can see, and Arturo will provide you with an explanation for the, the new directors. Basically, though, what he's going to say is that we collect these fees and they have to be spent in five years, or we have to return the fees. And we comply with that every year. We turn it over to the agencies representing the builders, et cetera, to have them check it. Okay, Arturo, would you elaborate on that?
Sure, thank you, General Manager Wallam, President Martin, and distinguished members of the board. Per California Government Code Title VII, Chapter Five, Section six-six-zero-zero-zero-two-six-six-zero-zero-eight, the district has to establish guidelines for capacity fees. Sometimes they're also referred to as development impact fees, connection fees, or infill. And these guidelines basically state that we cannot collect fees and sit on them without annexes or to simply build a reserve with those fees. Therefore, each year, the district prepares the annual connection fees for water and sewer report and submits them to our local DBBA and BIA chapters for review and agreement in order to be compliant with this section of the California Government Code. If, looking at the screen that I'm sharing, you can see that the Water District has collected as of twenty-twenty-two from the beginning of the program. has collected as of twenty twenty two from the beginning of the program twenty three million dollars compared to what we've spent in capital expenditures of forty two million dollars will be below the the amount of collected fees that shows that we're not sitting on those funds. And just a curious trend that I was noticing earlier when I was reviewing the report, you can see these connection fees are basically connecting to our water system. And then I'll show right now the sewer, but you can see the trend from nineteen eighty nine all the way to two thousand and three, when everything started to pick up in the in the development here in the city. And again, down to two thousand four, five, that two thousand and five was our highest collections as four point six million dollars. And then down again after the market crash of two thousand and seven, eight, nine, ten, and so forth. And you can see they're starting to pick up again after twenty eighteen. And now in twenty twenty two, from five hundred and forty four thousand to six hundred and seventy three thousand collected this year, which means we have several new accounts added to our system. Similar to the water in the sewer, we've also collected nineteen point eight million dollars. And we have spent thirty six point six million dollars. And again, well below the amount that we've collected, showing that we have met the state's requirement under this guideline. And at this time, I will answer any questions. If you have any specific items that you want me to go over.
Okay. Ivan? Ted, any questions?
No. No, I don't.
Okay, and I have none. Thank you very much. Okay, item eleven, election of Mission Springs Water District Board of Board Officers for twenty twenty three. We go through that every year. It'll be for the president and vice president of the of the board. And you'll be able to think about that over the weekend and decide who you want leading the board in the for the upcoming year. Any questions or comments on the process at all? Okay. Moving on to discussion items. Mission Springs Water District Regional Water Reclamation Facility update. Anything new on that?
Well, I'm going to let Steve share with you the progress we've been making.
Okay.
To you last met.
Thank you, General Manager Wollam. Good afternoon, President Martin and members of the board. I will be sharing a presentation on the progress for the regional water reclamation facility. Give me one second to share my screen. Okay. Okay, so construction has continued on the sequence batch reactor tanks, either the primary tanks that will take care of all the treatment at the site. The what you see in front of you is in a checkerboard pattern are the last several portions of the SBR slab on grade. So the treatment tank slabs on grade that were required. So all these slabs for the treatment tanks are officially complete as of November thirtieth. In addition, the contractor, J F Shea, continued construction on placing the SBR tank wall reinforcements towards the north end of the site. We're standing at the north end of the site looking south. And this view is looking from the south end of the site now, looking north. And you can see several of the walls, majority of the walls on the entire south half have already been constructed and are being formed up to be completed. The structure in front of you is the plant drain pump station. That is the deepest portion of the treatment plant. It's about thirty five feet deep. And after that was the that, excuse me, that was one of the first structures completed on the project. And since then, the contractor has been slowly pouring slurry to bring the level, the grade surrounding the plant drain pump station and provide a competent backfill and subgrade to begin construction on the headworks area. The headworks area construction is expected to begin in the next two weeks. In addition, the south half of the operations building that houses the blower room, the electrical room, and the offices for the treatment staff, all those were formed and poured. And what you see in front of you is the finishing of the slab work that was poured back in the middle of November. In addition, the contractor completed installing the conduits, the embedments, and trench drains and all the piping for the north half of the operations building. The operations building, the north half of the slab that you see in front of you was actually poured this morning. So I'll have that update for you next month of the completed. In addition, once the water is treated from the treatment plant, it goes through this twenty four inch line and in front of you down to the south end of the site to three percolation ponds. The contractors completed a majority of the twenty four inch effluent pipeline from the treatment structure down to the spreading ponds for effluent disposal as of earlier this week. And that's a bit of a short presentation today, but that's what I have for you.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
Amber, any questions or comments? Ted? Yes, sir. So the portal you just showed us of the buildings, those are going to be completed first, and then naturally you're going to bring in the equipment to operate operate it, correct?
Yes, sir.
Will you do one building and get it online and then do another building or you just, we we see now you build it and then open there?
They're going to finish completing the the structure portion or using all the walls for the tanks. And then they're actually going to be building the equipment inside of those tanks. Not completing one at a time, they'll be doing each phase concurrently for all four tanks. So they'll all be finished at the same time, but it's not a setup to have finish one first in front of another or in a series.
Okay, thank you. And I have another question for, go ahead. I would like to talk to Arturo on the finances and all this. Some some of the numbers just don't make sense to me, so I would like to go over that also. Thank you. Ivan, any questions? Okay, and any questions over here? All right. Moving on to Critical Services Center Administration Building update. Arden?
Thank you, General Manager, President Martin, members of the board. Just for the two new board members, we've been working with Ronald Clark, an architect who we went through a request for qualifications. They were the top selected firm. We have, we've had them under contract for about a year and a half working on a new administrative building, ops building, or to complete campus, if you will. Sets of those plans of where they were a couple of months ago, one set is over there next to Mr. Pickney. The other set is up in the general manager's office. Currently, those plans are about ninety five percent done that they are working on. That's why my report right now is somewhat small in the fact that they are getting close to finishing those. So we can get those, review those, and then get them out for bid. What we are continuing to do is set up, or excuse me, tours of two different facilities that were both designed by the same architect. One of them is Palm Springs Unified School District. That will be the twentieth. I believe the district's executive secretary has reached out to you about scheduling that. Hope you're available for that. That one is important because it's it's a lot larger building than we're looking at. It's a two story, sixty thousand square feet, almost two and a half times or twice the size that we're looking at. But the boardroom is completely different than the other board you're going to look at. It's a little bit more multifunctional and things like that. And also, the color schemes are a little bit different than what you'll see at the other building, and that will be the East Valley Building over in Highland that will be also scheduling that hopefully in the next month before we go to bid. So you have an idea of what you're going to be actually be asked to to vote on, if you will, for the construction of the building. So if there's any questions on that moving forward, you see the plans or anything like that, or want something else regarding the project, let me know, especially the two new board members. We can go from there, but that would conclude my report.
Okay. Any any questions or comments? Yes, here again, the the finances of this, I'm, now we have seventy two million dollars for sewer treatment plant. There's what, thirty eight million for for this building we're speaking of? So we're getting in about a hundred and ten million dollars. And I know the rate payers don't want to have to raise their rates up in order to pay for this hundred and ten million dollars that we're spending here. So when I speak with Arturo, I'll also be asking about that. Thank you. Well, I want to bring up one item that the waste treatment facility, of course, is completely financed by grant. We got a grant for that. So that won't be transferred on there. And as I understand it, the the new administration building is going to be covered by existing property taxes that we don't, we don't establish the county establishes property tax. So it it shouldn't impact the rate payers at all, but I'll let Arturo and or Arden address that. Okay, we'll go with that.
Mr. Wollam, your mic.
Why don't you leave it on, Arden? My concern is even at what, I'm sorry, you start, you finish?
Well, yeah, we thought this out very carefully and and we are in, we're in the best shape we've ever been in, so.
Well, even at one percent interest on seventy two million is quite a chunk of change every year. Concern.
Well, Arturo, we have an answer for that, too. Arturo can explain that.
Okay.
Yeah, and just a quick information. On Monday, I am planning on bringing an update to the board on the current financial situation of the district through the current fiscal year. And that's just a little bit of information of what's to come. Every January, in addition to normal financial data, we also go over the budget and do any mid-year adjustments if we need to. That is our opportunity to bring back to the board and where a lot of these programs stand. And just so you know as well, the main thing that we're going to be spending money on for like the regional grant is we are planning on bringing in a line of credit that's going to help the district with cash flows before we start collecting. As you know, this is the state that we're going to be requesting the reimbursements from. It's going to be, take a little bit of time before we actually get those funds after we submit the the grant reimbursement. After that, so there's going to be some lag of time for us to make up. And that's what the line of credit is going to accomplish. And that information will be presented as well when we present the the budget. And if the board wishes, I can present a more detailed budget report than normal when we do the mid-year budget report, so you can become familiar with where those funds are coming from and where we stand in terms of the reserves for the district and where we're going from here in terms of those guidelines as well.
Thank you, Arturo. I think that if it's acceptable that take you up on your offer of having a presentation of more details rather than meeting with you. That way, everybody will be able to hear what those details are. Thank you. Okay, anything further from the board?
I might write, might add that today, when I do the general manager's report, Marion will give her report, but Arturo's going to wait till Monday to do the financial.
All right. All right. Item fourteen, Energy Conservation and Efficiency Services Plan, NG Services U.S.
And I'm going to immediately turn this to Brian, and he can introduce our distinguished guests today.
Thank you, General Manager, President Martin, members of the board. On June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, Mission Springs Water District staff solicited qualifications for qualified contractors to demonstrate the competency and capacity to perform a design build contract to assist us in becoming more energy efficient. The design build contract will include three distinct phases. Development of an energy conservation and efficiency services plan or a feasibility plan, comprehensive plan development and filing for solar interconnection applications, construction of energy enhancements, and the capital improvements to reduce our electrical consumption. As described in the request for qualifications, that's actually part of your board packet attachment A. The contractor's expertise should include but not be limited to a focus on energy conservation, energy efficiency, energy generation, and other energy related capital improvement projects. Staff reviewed the three proposals that we received from the various consulting firms and contractors. And based on those qualifications, we evaluated and selected NG Services U.S. Inc., the most qualified contractor. That scoring sheet is also, as well as their proposal, is also in your board packet. To tell you more about the project, there are representatives from NG here. Please come up, introduce yourselves. The mouse, the mouse you have there should be working the presentation as well, so you should be in good shape.
Thank you, Mr. Macy. Good afternoon, Board President Martin, members of the board and staff. My name is Ashu Jain. I'm a senior manager with NG Services. As Mr. Macy mentioned, we were, we responded to a request for qualification and have been recommended to the board. So what I'd like to do is you know, take you through, you know, some of our projects, talk to you a little bit about who our company is. And I'll be happy to answer any questions at that point or anytime during the discussion. I also have with me my colleague Amelia Cotrell. She works very closely with me and she's been a part of this project right from the beginning. Okay, let's see. Okay. But some it's a right mouse. Okay, it's, okay. So I'm gonna start with who we are. So so NG Services is one of the largest companies in the world. We have over a hundred thousand employees. We are the largest producer of electricity in the world. And we've been around for close to hundred and ninety years now. And all that is very important in our industry because we guarantee savings for twenty years. So we guarantee the project performance for twenty years, and you want to make sure that you're working with the company that's been around, will continue to be around, and we are financially very, very strong. In the U.S., we have around six thousand employees. We've been in operation for close to fifty years. And a couple of things about us, we only work for the public sector. That's all we do. We don't do any commercial, industrial, residential work. We just focus on special districts, cities, counties, school districts. And you've done a lot of work for special districts. I mentioned a couple there. You've also done a lot of work in the area. City of Palm Springs, we did a twenty million dollar project, which is probably you know, not that close, but it's one that comes to mind. We have eight offices in California. The closest one is in Riverside. That's where if the board finally decides to move forward with us, that's where we'll operate out of. We have, we are the largest energy services company in the state. We have around a hundred and seventy people, around seventy five engineers. And we do a lot of energy storage, air conditioning, lighting, solar, and process improvements for water and wastewater treatment plants. Okay. So this just gives us sample of some of the entities we work with. I'm just highlighting two projects here. We are in the middle of construction at Yucapa Valley Water District, and that's a twenty six million dollar project. We're doing battery storage and solar and and gensit and forming what's constructing what's called a microgrid. So if anytime their power goes down, they have PSPS events there, it'll automatically seamlessly come back on. So we are in the middle of construction of that project. West County Wastewater District, District, that's up in Richmond, California. We are doing a sixty three million dollar, again, both these projects were designed build. We're doing a sixty three million dollar project there that completely upgrades their wastewater treatment plant, starting from the grit removal system. And we're putting new digesters, new blowers, new road freedom thickness. We're putting, producing class A biosolids, using thermal dryers. And we're reducing their hauling costs by two million dollars a year. So again, that's in the middle of construction, and both of these projects and all our projects are designed them. So this is the scope of work that was in the RFP and RFQ. And you know, I don't think we need to go through it, but we have the capability and we talked through a lot of these projects, and I think we are well, we're very capable of handling these kind of projects. So I can, if you have any questions, I can definitely answer. So I I wanted to take a couple of minutes to talk about the benefits of the design build process, which is, you know, not very, it's probably unique to, I'm not sure to to your district. But design build is a process which But design build is a process which, you know, which is all by government code forty-two seventeen. And it is, it has several benefits. And some of the key benefits are, you know, it, it reduces the completion time by almost a year because otherwise you have to do a RFP for a design company and then do an RFP for a construction company. And this way, you know, we, we're responsible and we deliver the project from start to finish. So one of the couple of things unique about us is we, we do the project completely at our risk. So we will, until you sign a construction contract, there is no, there is no cost that the district will be there. So there, so we'll do all the engineering, everything, bring the construction contract in front of the board. And if staff and board, either one decides not to move forward, it's on us. We, we go away. So that's a big difference between us and any other company out there, even design-built companies. We do these projects completely at risk. One of the main benefits of that is, you know, what's happening in today's market because of all the supply chain issues and inflation. A lot of times we see that districts have a budget. By the time they go out to bid for the engineer, go out to bid for the construction company, get final bids in, construction budget gets far exceeded. With us, the first time you'll see a construction budget is when we are giving you a guaranteed maximum cost. So what you sign is, you know, it's not going to go up because that's, that's the point at which you'll see the cost. So that's what I mean by saying total project price known before investing any dollars. We guarantee performance for twenty years. And if there is a, you know, reduction in savings or the savings are not there, we will actually write a check every year for twenty years. And unfortunately, we've done that. So, but it's a real guarantee. The last thing I, I think important enough to mention is single source. A lot of times when what you see in design bid build project, you'll have an engineer, if there's something goes wrong with the project, you'll have the design engineer blaming the contractor, the contractor blaming the design engineer, the district's got in the middle. With us, where there is no, you know, we're, we're, we're providing the entire project. So there is nobody else to, we, no, no one else that's responsible but us. So those are some of the key things. And if you have any questions, I can take it at any time. So the, our process is fairly simple. We do a feasibility study. And that's basically a twenty thousand foot study just to see, you know, we'll walk all your facilities, analyze your utility data, come back with estimated cost, estimated savings, how you could potentially finance that, you know, through your own enterprise funds or third-party financing. And then we work with the district staff. And if they choose, we can go to the board at a, in a study session and see which projects you want us to move forward with analyzing and coming back with detailed engineering, guaranteed maximum price, guaranteed savings. And even the development is done at no cost to the, to the district. At that point, you know, we'll, if the staff and board approves the project, then we'll go build the project. So that's, that's the process. So even though this project is designed build and the district is, if the board elects to work with us, you know, we will still competitively bid it out. We are very transparent on our pricing. We are very unique that way. We'll show your staff all our proposals. We'll show how much money we are making on top. It's all completely open book. And we do that because, you know, we only work for the public sector and we're very used to making sure that, you know, that everybody's comfortable with, with our proposal and our pricing. And we follow government code section forty-two seventeen, which allows public entities in California to do this design build process if certain conditions are met. There are two things that I wanted to highlight, which is two developments in our industry that have happened very recently. So for solar projects, there's something called net energy metering. You do have a solar project. Actually, your solar project's not net metered, but it's a different kind of rate schedule. But in general, solar projects that you have at home or, or majority of the solar projects, you buy and sell energy every fifteen minutes at the cost that's applicable at that time. The utilities have been pushing back against that for the longest time and they finally succeeded. So what they've done, CPUC has agreed to reduce the export value. When you sell to the utility, when you're overproducing and you sell to the utility, your, your compensation is going down by seventy-five percent. It's, it's done. It's going to be voted on tomorrow. It's fifteenth. When is fifteenth? It's today, I think. Yeah, it's going to be, it might already be, I don't know when PUC's meeting was, but it's, it's done. It wasn't the agenda item yesterday. And so we tried to, we protested against it for a year. It didn't change anything. So bottom line, this will reduce your savings on any solar project by around fifty percent. The way to avoid that is to file what's called an interconnection application. Once you file the interconnection application, you have three years to build the project and twenty years, you grandfather for twenty years in the current savings as applicable right now. So like, I, I think you're considering a solar project with that admin building, the new admin building. We would work with the district staff to, you know, plan it, design it, and then file the interconnection application. Again, we don't need any compensation for that. And we will file it on, on the district's behalf. And that will make sure that your grandfather in your current savings for twenty years. So we will do that for any solar project. So that's one I, you know, and you have to do that before April fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. But it's not simply we can file an application on April thirteenth and that's enough. We have to do the engineering. We have to file an application. We have to allow a CE to review the application. They'll ask a lot of questions. So, and so we need to get started fairly quickly in January in, in starting this process. There's something you might have heard about the Inflation Reduction Act that was signed by Biden on August sixteenth. It invests almost three hundred and sixty-nine billion dollars in renewable energy and energy projects and any battery storage and solar project. And actually, any project that you do with digester gas also will be eligible for thirty percent cash back from the federal government upon completion. So, so those are a couple of things that have happened very recently and which actually make it, you know, imperative that, you know, you act now if you're interested in these, these kind of projects. That's the end of the presentation. I would be happy to take any questions and, yeah.
Emma, do you have any questions, comments? Robert?
Not at this time.
Ted?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the wonderful presentation. You seem like you've got a great company to, to go with. When you say that you're doing the engineering and that for free at this time, you will actually put that cost in later on.
We will.
Okay.
Yes.
And you also made a comment about, and that's fine. Thanks. I understand that. You also made a comment about the guaranteed design or build cost. So if in the next year, the cost of materials quadruples,
Right.
your company needs that.
Yes, so.
That doesn't happen.
Right. Yeah, but, you know, but, you know, that, that's correct. So when we give you a price, we will have a bucket for contingency and that as a bucket called escalation towards construction. So we do have that and it's identified.
Okay, thank you.
Ivan?
Yeah, great presentation. I think, you know, it makes a lot of sense, especially with energy costs going up. And for the most part, it seems like all of your projects kind of typically pay for themselves over time. I was happy to hear that you'd be also, I mean, most of your presentation seems like it's existing facilities and equipment, but also happy to hear you would work with our architect for the new campus. Would you also do any work with our new regional treatment plant?
Yes, we haven't really discussed the scope of work with the staff yet, but yeah, we would, we, in our recommendations and our initial look, we were thinking there are, at least on the solar and battery storage side, we can maybe offer something, but again.
Part if I understand it correctly, the feasibility.
Right, definitely.
And that is, that, you know, won't be a cost to the district. We have to move forward. Is that the step three there?
Okay, and it is possible, once you do, do your study, that we could break up certain aspects of the work and approve one and maybe not approve another.
Right, definitely, that, you know, we'll, we'll provide, we're very transparent, so we'll provide you the pricing and the savings for each measure by each facility. And you can decide which ones you want to go with. So this is something that, you know, works in, we work in collaboration with your staff. And just to clarify, most of our, not most, all of our projects do pay for themselves. That's the idea that the savings will exceed the cost. They don't have, necessarily have to be energy savings, but there, you know, could be operational savings. But most of our projects ultimately do have a positive cash flow.
Okay, and then just one final question, one that really stuck out to me that I think would be beneficial would be the battery storage at like each of our well sites. Is that a possibility to have enough, I guess, capacity to run the well? Should we have power failure?
Yes, so we have a lot of expertise in that. Battery storage had an incentive program that actually has been exhausted. So we stopped, not, I mean, it got exhausted like three months ago. But because of the Inflation Reduction Act, now you get thirty percent back from the federal government. So it becomes more attractive. We'll have to evaluate if, you know, using, so these battery storage are, you can do it two ways. You can do it to save money or you can do it to save money as well as provide backup. The providing the backup costs more money with really not any additional savings.
Okay.
So we always evaluate, you know, is that a good investment or not? If you are having a lot of PSPS or power, power events, or failure events, yeah, we can definitely look at that and we do well battery storage wells all the time.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Anything further? Anything further, Arden?
No, nothing.
Thank you, Ashu.
Thank you, sir.
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you so much.
Moving on to the consent agenda, we have the approval of minutes for November seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, study session, November twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, board meeting. We also have item sixteen, register of demands. Register of demands totaling eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty cents. And item seventeen, the twenty twenty-three board of directors meeting schedule. Does anybody have any comments or questions concerning the consent agenda? Ivan?
I'll be, I wasn't here for those meetings, so.
Well, you do, you will be for the future.
Future, yes.
Future one, so.
For those, I, I want to say I will be.
Well, you'll have another opportunity on Monday if you find something to talk about and then.
Oh.
Okay. Moving on to director's report, does anybody want to give their director's report today? Ivan?
Could I go Monday?
Monday, okay. Robert?
Monday.
And I will go with Monday as well, except I do want to point out the very nice looking trophy we have over there on the countertop. Arden, you want to touch on, or Brian, you want to touch on that?
You see, but Brian was there. I couldn't make it. I had to.
Yeah.
I was being called, I was being called to, to be my wife that night.
We have one of our elves that were here.
I think that you should comment since that's really about him.
We did get first place.
We got first place and the judges were a panel of high school students. So that was kind of special too, and we won. And there were a lot of impressive flows there, but I think the thing that tipped the scales in our favor was the snowmaking machine that we had. I mean, little kids were running out and trying to play it in the snow when we were driving, when we were going down the, down the parade route. It was really quite, quite special, so. And I will give my regular director's report, just for the benefit of the two people here. The director's reports are a report back on any meeting you attended representing the water district, some of which you get compensated for, some of which you do on your own. And it's always nice to, it's required to give a report back on the ones that you were compensated for to give. It doesn't have to be a lot of detail or anything like that. It's just, and you'll get the gist of it when we, when we give our presentations on, on on Monday. Moving on to the general manager's report, item nineteen, Arden?
Yes, as I said, the, the finance will be on Monday. And with that said, I think Marion would like to present to you today her report.
Okay.
Thank you, General Manager Wallam, and good afternoon, President Martin and members of the board. I have a quick PowerPoint that I'd like to share with you. I'll, it'll get that up in just one moment. It's been a fun month. We've participated in several community events, including the well-attended Desert Hot Springs Parade of Lights that we just spoke about, the Women's Club Black and White Fundraiser and the Desert Hot Springs State of the City. Staff also attended the Aqua Fall Conference that was hosted in Indian Wells this year, and our employees participated in both a holiday food drive that benefited students from Painted Hills Middle School and a citywide toy drive that concluded today. In addition to this, we also hosted our third Community Water One-O-One Session at the Desert Hot Springs Library. This session focused on water sources and state and regional planning efforts. The meeting was once again very well attended, and I'd like to thank all of the staff and the management who helped put it together. We have another Water One-O-One scheduled for January nineteenth that will focus on rates, finance, and customer service. I also want to mention that we will once again host the live stream team for a blood drive on December twentieth. What better way to give back to our community during the holidays than through a life-saving donation? Sign-up information is available on our website or you can visit lstream.org forward slash MSWD to make an appointment. I also wanted to update the board on the planning efforts that are taking place on the seventy, seventieth anniversary celebration. As I mentioned during our last meeting, we have secured Mission Springs Park on Friday, February third, for a community event that will take place between four and seven P.M. The fun-filled event will feature children's activities, games, face painting, music, dancing, community partner booths, and of course, MSWD's award-winning water. The anniversary committee members have been working very hard to plan the event. And so far, we have tentatively confirmed community partner tables from the City of Desert Hot Springs, the DHS Rec Center, the Rotary, Friends of the Library, the Historical Society, Kittyland Cat Rescue, Women's Club, Diversity DHS, and we're still working on a few additional ones. In addition to our community partner booths, we'll have music and food trucks, a bouncy house, cotton candy, and other fun treats for all the families that come on out. We do have an outreach plan that the committee has vetted, and you will start seeing ads and materials in the community after the holidays, including a change out of our billboard later this month on Palm Drive and a printed insert in the January billing statements. On the community outreach front, I'm pleased to share that our conservation and groundwater protection calendars arrived last week, and we have started to distribute them throughout the community. Customers can pick them up from our payment center or throughout town, including DHS City Hall, the library, rec center, senior center, farmer in the Dale Protus Market, and the skate shop on Pearson Boulevard. We are also mailing certificates and copies of the calendars to all of the participants and have invited the twelve winners to come by our office to pick up their gift cards and copies of the calendars. I've also invited our three winners to join us at our January Board of Directors meeting, and I look forward to introducing them to each of you, to you. Our latest edition of the Water Matters newsletter is being inserted in the December billing statements. The issue includes stories covering the class action lawsuit, information and website, protecting your pipes from fats, oil, and grease, especially now during the holidays, toilet and turf rebates, grant funding, and the progress report on the new regional water reclamation facility, and the availability of the twenty twenty-three community calendars, and also our bill assistance programs. Earlier this year, Aqua launched a new educational campaign called Quench California. The campaign seeks to increase awareness throughout the state that in order to meet California's future water needs, additional water infrastructure projects will be both expensive and expansive, and that we will need both state and federal support and partnerships to succeed in this effort. The theme of the campaign was highlighted during several of the breakout sessions at last month's Aqua Conference. We are partnering with Aqua and incorporating their materials into our outreach, outreach efforts. In return, they have highlighted In return, they have highlighted our regional walker, water reclamation facility, both in their social media and in their twenty-twenty-three calendar. A rendering and a write-up of the project are included in the month of September. You'll continue to see more of the Quench materials, especially on our social sites and the Quench California hashtag on our monthly regional plant video updates online. I also invite you to mark your calendars. I'm currently working with the Riverside County Master Gardeners Association to schedule a workshop at the Desert Hot Springs Library on Thursday, February twenty-third that will highlight desert-friendly plants and outdoor watering and conservation techniques. Space will be limited to the first thirty that register. Um, but if this event is successful, my hope is that we will expand these sessions and will host at least one of them every quarter. You should start to see flyers and social media posts on this in early to mid-January. I also wanted to provide you today with a quick hydrology update. The snowpack in the Sierra Nevada Mountains is currently at two hundred percent abnormal. However, experts are warning us that it's still too early to say that the drought is over. We saw similar wet patterns in October and December of last year, and then we were followed by the driest January, February, March in more than a hundred years. This has prompted the State Water Resources Control Board to re-adopt its emergency rec limit, emergency regulation that uh, bolsters California's conservation efforts and also prohibits water-wasting activities across the state. This regulation was originally adopted in January twenty, twenty twenty-two and is now extended until January twenty twenty-four. It applies to all water users, including individuals, businesses, and public agencies. You may have also heard the news yesterday that Metropolitan reaffirmed its drought emergency yesterday, paving a way for additional restriction on its users should the state's water supply not improve. On December first, state officials announced that our state water project contractors may only receive five percent of their requested supplies for the start of twenty twenty-three. This was the first allocation announcement, and I expect this number will change as we progress throughout the winter season. I do want to leave you with one piece of good news. The end of La Niña could occur sometime between February and April of next year. Over the past three years, cooler-than-average uh, water temperatures in the Pacific Ocean have led to consecutive La Niña years, but climate experts at the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration believe there is a seventy-one percent chance that the stat, that this status could switch to neutral next spring. We will keep this board updated as conditions and stoneback continue to change. And last, but certainly not least, um, we have this month's video preview. As part of the mini-campaign that I'm running in January, um, we are going to be having a, promoting different various bill payment assistance programs and also our payment plan options, so that customers uh, who may be struggling to pay their bills have additional options. We'll be promoting this video uh, on our social media sites and our paid online advertising in January and February. And with that, I will run the video. That is, uh, you'll notice that there are still some watermarks in that video. This is still the rough cut of it, and we'll be making some additional refinements. But this is one more piece in our tool chest for, um, for our customers. And with that, I want to thank you all for your time and wish you all happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion. That was an excellent presentation. Uh, as usual, I'm getting used to your excellent presentation, so it isn't it isn't all that unusual to hear an excellent presentation from you, but uh, Ivan, any questions or comments?
Um, one thing I just noticed was that we're still seeing uh, more registrants to the customer portal, so good job on that. And I did want to just uh, make mention, I had spoke with Arturo as well that um, a few people I had talked to were having issues with the auto pay, um, and that seems to have resolved itself, so at least my auto pay went through uh, this last month as well as another person I spoke to, so, thank you.
Okay, Ted?
Yes, that was excellent presentation. I was wondering what you was doing in that office. Now I know. I think it's uh, really wonderful that the water district participates in all these programs. And I, I, I really like to see it, and thank you for putting it all together.
Amber?
The same. Thank you for the presentation and thank you for helping our customers and ratepayers understand what's available to them to help them when they're having difficulty.
Thank you. Uh, Robert?
Good job, and uh, I, because I am on the committee, most people don't really realize how much work she's actually doing. For the seventieth anniversary, I am looking forward to it. It's gonna be a, a great community event, so um, it's coming fast, but it'll be something that we'll all be uh, happy to see, so. And um, if I don't see you before then, have a great Christmas.
And moving on to item twenty, District Council comments.
I have nothing to report on today.
Okay, no closed session?
No.
All right. Director's comments, Ivan?
Yeah, I have a, a handful. Um, first, a quick thank you to Carol and Marion. Um, I had the opportunity um, earlier this month to speak at Cabot Yerkesa Elementary, and they helped me put together some little goodie bags for the kids and uh, it was well-received, so thank you. And then uh, just wanted to welcome our two new board members. I really uh, look forward to working with both of you and forming a good working relationship. Um. I know at, at times we may have a difference of opinion, um, but I hope we can remain civil and work together. Um. And just uh, respect each other's opinions. Um, the five of us here have at least twenty-three more meetings together, so I think uh, we owe it to our customers and our staff to just uh, stay focused on the task at hand and have productive, respectful meetings. Um, also encourage the two of you and Director Griffin to get involved with the CSDA, and that's California Special District Association, which we're members of. Um. They have a lot of different resources for board members through their website and the different events they host. Um, one is uh, their Leadership Academy, and I know both President Martin and myself have attended the Leadership Academy, and it was a big help for me, especially when I first got on the board. Um, and I'm sure Dory and our general manager can give you more information on that. Um, and then the last thing is uh, I'm not sure how this would work exactly, but I would like to see some type of informal workshop where the five of us could get together and kind of just um, I think it's hard sometimes at board meetings to really dive deep into some of your questions and things like that. And I think um, having us all together and having um, a better understanding of each other's goals and desires for the district would be uh, helpful.
So we'll try to put that together in January.
Thank you.
Okay, Ted?
Yes, thank you. I mean, I, I appreciate the uh, information for the leadership. Me, I think that's wonderful. Um. I would just like to thank all the voters and, and wish Nancy Wright uh, well, and, and whatever she'll be doing later on, and congratulate uh, Steve Goshen, Jeff Bowman on their success and their campaigns and moving forward to the, the water districts they'll be serving on. Um. I appreciate the uh, all the staff time that has been taken to uh, take us on a tour of, of all the facilities and, and the, the water uh, wells and reservoirs, and it was quite educational, and I know there's about another ninety-five percent that I haven't learned about it yet. So I'm looking forward to that. And just once again, thank you, and, and I'm, I'm looking forward to working with all the board members as a team, and we may not agree on everything, like you said, and, and that's okay. As long as we can, we, we're here to serve the customers and that, and that's the main thing, and having those differences of opinion sometimes helps us to receive things and serve the customers correctly.
Get a better decision.
Amber?
I'll reserve most of my comments for Monday, but um, cause I concur with, with uh, Director Moore Happen in, in congratulating those that did win their elections and thanking those who are going on other directions and, and for their years of dedication on the board. Um, but I also want to thank the staff of MSWD that I have met um, for the time you have taken and the offers you've made to bring us up to speed as quickly as possible. I appreciate the transparency that I've been provided, and I wanted to thank you all for the time you've all taken to do that.
Thank you.
Robert?
Uh, I just want to welcome Ted and I have worked before, but welcome Amber. Um, it's always nice to get a fresh perspective and a fresh face, and we'll be neighbors, so um, hopefully I won't annoy you too much, but um, I'm looking forward to um, a good two years. It's um, it's a great group and it's a really, really fun uh, job to learn about, so, uh, welcome and um, I'll see you all on Monday.
Yeah, I wanted to uh, add to what uh, Director Sewell said uh, with respect to CSDA, that is one of the better um, organizations that we're members of, uh, give us a lot of training in a lot of different areas that is not afforded to us by other um, water conferences, et cetera. So it's a very excellent, you get an opportunity to attend a California Special District Association uh, conference. I, I highly recommend you take advantage of that. Um. I want to echo something that Ted just said here a minute ago, and that it's uh, a healthy organization does have differences of opinion. And uh, you, you, the, the difference has been in the past in some organizations and perhaps even here is uh, you, you have a, you have a difference of opinion on an issue. You state your difference of opinion, your justification for feeling that way. Um, you have discourse with the other board members, and then you move on to the next item of business. Uh, unfortunately, at a lot of agencies, there's a lot of personal attacks and things like that that are really uncalled for. So I personally welcome any difference of opinion that either a, any of the board members have, and, and uh, I'm, I'm hopeful that uh, we'll be able to uh, really function as a, as a outstanding organization that, that for the most part, we have been for many years in this, this area, so. With that, if there's nothing uh, further, um, I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.